All right, it's seven o'clock, so we'll call the meeting to order. And you can take roll call when you're ready.
Markle.
Here.
Evans.
Here.
Kettering.
Here.
Michael.
Here.
Schultz.
Here.
Weiss.
Here.
Hoffman.
Here.
Okay, everybody had a chance to look at the minutes from the previous meeting. So I need a motion to approve unless there's some changes.
I have a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I will second that.
Motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 I'll state.
Kettering abstains, opposed? Right? Are there any items to be added to the agenda for tonight? Hearing none, I would need a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Let's talk about this.
Have a motion in a second, all in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same thing? Right? And then we need to conflict of interest declarations, we can start with Kathy.
None.
Dennis, Michael, none.
Chris, Markle, none?
Dan, Kettering, none.
Sherry, Hoffman, none.
Matt Evans, none.
Kristi Schultz, none.
All right, as usual, we got a few minutes. Here before the first agenda item. All right, the first agenda item is Sudbeck CUP applicant wishes to build an accessory structure that is forty-eight hundred square feet with eighteen foot sidewalls and a planned unit development. Per Article eighteen, section eighteen oh five, said property is legally described as lot eight Deerfield Ranch Estates, Yankton County, South Dakota, as per plat recorded in book S eighteen, page two eighty-three, Yankton County, South Dakota, E nine one one, address is two five six Deerfield Drive, Yankton, South Dakota. Before we get started, do you want to kind of go over a little bit though?
Yeah, so this is a PUD, planned unit development, and this is one of the original ones, I guess, anyway, the, we had a variance application in the same PUD last year. And the file is nowhere to be found, disappeared somewhere years ago, and so they're just going through the process to make sure there's no questions moving forward as to whether there's conformity or not, so we have no PUD to go by, so.
And what's the abutting land there in the yellow?
That's moved into your residential.
Our one.
Our one, yeah. So we just kind of went by that for the application.
Everything in the brown was a PUD.
The PUD, yeah. There was a lot over here that was a variance, we did the same thing, they're just doing it basically to make sure there's no questions moving forward about whether it conforms.
Um, before we take questions, you can come up during public comment unless you want us to address that real quick, Bill.
In the zoning ordinance, this is listed as conditional use permit over the size of what's typically allowed for that size of structure. So in a low density, you'd be allowed four thousand square foot with sixteen foot side high, excuse me, sixteen foot high sidewalls, so if you go a little bit bigger than that, you have to file for conditional use permit.
So now with that, is there somebody here to speak for Mr. Sudbeck? Please state your name for the record.
Nick, Nick Mosher, and I'm here on behalf of Mr. Sudbeck, although I don't know, maybe Mr. Happy wants to get up to the mic. Yes, as, as Bill said, it is a little bit sort of funky, I think, when it's in that PUD designation. But I do think it's appropriate to look at the properties that are, are closest to it, and as was said, you know, you're at that four thousand square foot range. You know, this is a little bit larger at forty-eight hundred square feet, but, you know, I think that's certainly well within the range that you would see a, a typical conditional use in a situation like this. You know, I think it's also really consistent with what you see generally out in that area, when you look at the conditional use, you know, your typical factors that you look at, you know, is it going to change pedestrian or automobile safety, certainly not, I mean, he's just putting up a, an accessory building on his property. You're not going to see any noticeable increase in traffic, it really doesn't encroach or give any kind of problems as far as setback, as you can see from the packet, I mean, he's got significant amount of room on all sides. No, no issue with traffic flow, no parking or loading issues, you're not going to see any increase in, you know, noise or glare or odor at all, and certainly no increase as opposed to if he had, you know, built a four thousand square foot structure there, so, and again, plenty of setback, should not cause any issues, at least no significant issues to the neighbors, the HOA took a vote on it, and I think you saw that in your packet, they voted in favor. You know, I think there was, was maybe a small opposition to that, but, you know, there always is when you're talking about property, you all know that better than anybody. And I think the, the most important thing is that there's really no adverse, you know, public interest issue here, so, again, I think it's pretty typical and straightforward, and we would ask for your support, happy to answer any questions.
All right, um. Bill, could you zoom in on it, and then could you show us where exactly you were going, where the, your client's going to put the?
Yeah, it's on, I've got it here on the application.
I was gonna say, I didn't see it.
Well, we're going to do it adjacent to correctly, if I'm wrong, but I believe it was right in this area here.
Yeah, you can see it on the site map, it's just really, it's kind of right in there.
Oh, the first one, yeah.
Yeah.
With the setbacks marked.
See the property in red and then the blue there in the. You can see where the driveway comes into the house there, just, just above it, so.
Here's the house, here's the driveway, it's just the location.
Are you adding a second drive into that, or just the, using the primary drive and then branching off of it?
Using the primary. Any other questions?
How big is the lot? The acreage that it's on?
The acreage is just at eight point four? Okay, I knew it was right around eighty and a half.
And this structure is just for personal use, or I know there was some concern brought up about possibly renting it out and?
No rental. Any additional questions? Thank you.
All right, at this time, I'd entertain anybody from the public that wishes to comment on this particular issue, come up and state your name, and say what you want to say.
Roger Freeler. The only question I have, what happens to the HOA, the covenants we have, because I didn't get a lot of this, I was sick in bed, so we have an HOA of fifty by sixty-five, so what happens to that, if we approve this, is it a free for all for everybody else?
As far as your HOA goes, we don't really have any power to regulate that, or
Okay.
Or do anything, any deciding as far as how your HOA or, yeah, any of your covenants work, that's not?
That was a question I had, so.
Is there anybody else in the audience here that'd like to comment? All right, seeing none, I close public comment. Or discussion.
Doesn't appear to block anybody's view, it's more than adequate acreage, has more than adequate setbacks. And it is not that much higher than what's allowed. I mean, people have big things, big campers and things that they want to store inside, and actually, it's preferable for the county to be stored inside, then we get tax money.
I guess I have a, I have a question, I guess, and I probably, maybe you all can clarify it, but if you read through the application for PE, they have to submit a plan of what's going to be there, and that's how that plan is what's approved to be at that PUD. Now, granted, we can't rule on covenants on that. But part of the things in the covenants were part of the plan that was, that was presented to us to approve as coming in as a PUD. And it basically specifically states in the PUD ordinance that the only person that can change that is the developer, he has to come in and ask for a request to change.
And we dealt with this when we went through the variance with, for Carnes too, that PUD file disappeared years ago before we were here. So we decided the safest way to do it was to go through the CUP process, make sure it, it, you know, followed the, the county ordinance, because we don't know there, this was one of the first ones that may have just, you know, blanketed ours. So this way, you know, we, we, you folks can make the decision and they're covered if they want to sell their property in the future, it's considered conforming, so we're just kind of covering the bases with that.
But doesn't, doesn't the issue, they'll become, basically, it's no longer a PUD, it becomes a residential district if you allow anybody to do anything.
Well, no, we can't enforce their covenants, that's an agreement.
I'm not talking covenants, Kristy, I'm talking.
But that's what he's talking.
But I'm talking about the fact that when it was approved as a PUD, there was a list of things that came in that they were going to do, like how the sewer was going to run, what size the lots were, the style of houses that were built, what could be built. I mean, it says that all right in section thirteen here about how that all has to be come in, and that's what we looked at, and we make a determination on what their, you know, it's wheel of fortune, wherever you want to call it, but we make a deal, let's make a deal on this, how we're going to do this. But once you, once you've established that, and that's what passed and went through, and I don't know where the records are, I probably could have dug back in hundreds of papers and found something, but.
We asked the original developer for a copy, and he couldn't supply one.
Right.
But, but even so, I, I understand your, your viewpoint, I absolutely do, but in any case, if the developer came in and he decided to do something different with this property, he would come to us, and what would he ask for? A CUP, which is exactly what we get.
But, but that would be proper for the developer to come in and ask. Not someone from the, just live in the house out there, comes in and asks to change the, the picture of the PUD by whatever they want to do.
Well, I mean, if he was, if he was planning to have something that was not allowed in that area at all, then I would agree with that, but we're talking eight hundred square feet larger. We're not talking a huge difference, we're not talking about running a business or commercial property in the middle of a residential district. So to me, it's still conducive to the, the basic feel and the atmosphere of the community, that's my opinion.
Um, I'd like to add one thing too, when this, when the variance we did last year in the same PUD came to the county commission, a couple of them asked, well, is this even necessary? And the reason was, maybe they could go ahead and do it without the CUP, but this way, it's on record, and it conforms to the county zoning. So there's no question in the future, if they decide to sell their property, the, the bank's not going to say, is this non-conforming and not give a loan, this just makes it conform.
And, you know, I'm not, it's not that I'm the, the thing that I think you can't use is you can't, other than the, the other residences and properties within that PUD, you can't use any other part of the area surrounding there as a criteria for all everybody else doing, because they came in, plot of that land out, designed out how the buildings are supposed to look and be, and now, we got, because of loss of the record or whatever it is, there's no way to hold that.
That's exactly it, Dennis, you have no proof, that's, that's the problem, and after talking to the people, it's, how can I prove that, that they're not complying with, with what's going on out there?
Yeah, well, my.
That's why they thought best with the, at least for you, future too, that, that we go through the CUP process.
And that's, you know, that's what I say, you know, and the problem is, is like, I remember we, we approved one before on a, on a big shed out there.
Yeah.
And, and I asked the question, did you get written permission from the developer, we all knew who that was, and the same person you get permission because even though we can't pay any attention to covenants, it was, he was the one that applied for the PUD in here. So then what happens someplace down the road?
Wants to go after that, they have that.
Right.
It's basically, I think, comes down to the PUD is basically spot zoning, making up your own rules for that district, and if we're gonna go and do a CUP and basically try to follow our one instead, because we don't have any documentation, we can't really say one way or another, if we're following what the PUD
Yeah, it's hard, I mean, you got almost, you almost have to be at, at least modern density, you know, or like you say, our one, the bigger lots. Follow those setbacks and stuff like that, but we don't, we don't know what that, they are right now. Other information, but I guess, down the road, you know, I don't know, because I know we've had other people come in, and because of, you know, out by the lake and stuff like that, because of topography or some other thing that came, they had to come in and alter their PUD, and we had to approve that process too, so in order for the PUD to hold its value in the town, you've got to have some
That would be nice.
Yeah. It's like a free for all for anybody, just do what you want, it don't really matter.
And that's why you got to try and find a way to make what seems like a logical direction to go and, and get these things through, so that everybody's satisfied in the future.
So is there, is this something that, since we don't have documentation in the PUD, and maybe this isn't something we can do tonight, I mean, I'm not talking specifically about this application, but in this area, since we don't have documentation of purity, would it make sense to rezone it back to something else, or is that not?
What will happen is more aggressive by ordinance that in this, in this situation, we're going to do this, I think is what, what, what the plan will be.
So I have a question.
None of the other residents out there have a copy of the, nobody's got a copy.
That's what we've been told, that nobody, nobody seems to have the documentation.
So I have a question on this. It's kind of like what you guys were explaining. I think this is fine to be here, I don't want it to affect any, anybody's decision on this, I think this is going to be good for this area, I think he meets the setbacks, everything, my question is so this is zoned PUD right now, okay, so if it was a revision in any way, whether we know the rules or not, no matter what the rules are, since we don't know what they are, doesn't it just go to planning and zoning for a revision, if it was even a question?
It's not a revision, because we don't know what the original was.
So you can't call it?
Because it was for that entire subdivision, that just one lot, so, so not the not knowing what the regulation was, that's hard to do.
I guess it just kind of confuses me, because basically, they're just playing the safe card and doing.
They're just doing this to cover future questions.
Yeah.
Like we did with the variance last year.
Gotcha. So our ordinance lets us do a CUP on a PUD?
We can, first with legal, and that was their recommendation, since the original file is, is nowhere to be found, and even, like I said, even the developer couldn't provide a copy for us. That this was the way to go, that covers everybody, so that in the future, there's no question about whether it's conforming.
Well, I would say legal knows best, so.
But I guess, you know, it still goes back to the question though, and a little bit what Matt was going on was the fact that, okay, so what, what protection does that PUD have from anything, and I mean, if there's no record there, it's, it's really kind of wide open to do anything.
That's why the CUP is going, that's what we're trying to correct that.
I think one.
I know it's hard, it's, it's a tough situation, but.
I know there's not much backup as far as our commission goes, but thank God they at least have covenants in place civilly, you know, to cover. Like you said, I believe that the covenants, you know, were probably part of the PUD itself, so.
The sad part about that whole thing though, even though we can't pay attention to the covenants, they don't mean anything either, because it says right in there, in that copy of the, that's got, basically the same thing as what this says right here, is that you can't go outside of what it says you can do in here unless you, somebody, the developer comes in and makes a change.
In the covenants, oh, it does say the developer, like, the covenants that I have on my property is all the people on the land have to agree to it.
Or the agent thereof, so if it becomes homeowners association or something like that, but they're the ones that have to apply for it, not. The entity.
Gotcha, did the owner, you guys talked to the owner, and he had no issues with this at all?
The homeowners association approved it.
Yes.
Okay, and the, the person who applied for the PUD? We haven't talked to him at all.
Just when we asked him earlier for the variance, what, if he had a copy of the PUD and he didn't?
And all these lots are sold out here right now, right?
I, I believe so, yeah.
Okay, so I wouldn't think that he would have any say anyways, let's just.
Well, if we're done discussing it, or anything else you want to say, like, I would entertain a motion.
I'd move approval for the conditional use for rent for the Sudbicks.
Second.
Motion in a second, do a roll call vote when you're ready.
Excuse me.
Markle.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Kettering.
Yes.
Michael.
No.
Schultz.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Hoffman.
Yes.
All right, motion carried. All right, next up on the agenda is Kraken, CUP applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to build a two-family home in a moderate density residential district per Article seven, section seven oh seven. Said property is legally described as lot four, block two, law overlooked subdivision, located in the northeast quarter of section eighteen, township ninety-three north, range fifty-six west of fifth PM, Yankton County, South Dakota. E nine one one, address is one one two Okey Doke Lane, Yankton, South Dakota.
This is the, the lot.
An okey dokey?
You can see, there are already a couple twin homes down here.
All right, and then if you want to come on up and speak for this one?
Nick Mosher again, and just going back to the last one, that was a good discussion, I'm glad I got to listen to it, because you're, you're right, it is a difficult problem when you got a PUD and you don't have the rules to the game, so, this one, fortunately, I think is quite a bit easier, this one is, is zoned R two and multifamily housing pretty clearly allowed as a, a conditional use, and I think all the same factors as, you know, in the last one, you're not going to see an increase in traffic flow. You know, the occupants are a husband and wife, and brother of, of the wife is taking the other side, and they, family has a, our family business has a property in the same area. Certainly no economic noise, glare, refuse, none of that stuff, very compatible with the other areas, and certainly less disruptive than you know, some of the other things that could be in there, like a school and church and that kind of stuff, so, hope this one is a little more clear and happy to take any questions. Hope this one is a little more clear and ha- happy to take any questions.
I guess this one to me looked pretty clear in the packet. Unless any of you guys got a question for Nick? Alright, thanks. Is there anybody from the audience here wish to speak on the C U P? Seeing none, I will close public comment. Um, is there any board discussion?
Since we already have twin homes in the area, it's conducive to the area. And it is a family unit in both sides, so you know. I think that also speaks well to the neighborhood.
Now, each the minimum lot sizes and then yard requirements, all the setbacks. All around the whole thing according to the map that we have, so. Conditional use in section seven oh seven, so.
My understanding is to be a very nice house too.
Yeah.
So it should fit in with the area.
Motion to approve the conditional use permit?
I'll step in.
Alright, I have a motion in a second, unless there's any more. Um, discussion, we can do a vote when you're ready.
Barkle.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Kettering.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Hoffman.
Yes.
Alright, motion carried. Next up, we have. Platts. First one is Fred Schultz. Platt of Schultz Edition in the east half of section nine, T ninety-six north, range fifty-six west of the fifth PM, Yankton County, South Dakota.
Motion to approve.
Okay, second.
Uh, before we vote on that, dude, um, is there anything we need to know about Bill?
Yeah, I was gonna pull it up here. They own both of these parcels, they wanted to build a structure, the only place that they found it to fit was right on the property line. So instead of trying to get a variance or anything, they just plan them together and eliminates. That middle. Property line and they can do what they want in there.
Alright, so I had a. Motion by Kettering and second by Michael. Oh, other way, sorry, we reached that. And we can vote when you're ready.
Barkle.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Kettering.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Hoffman.
Yes.
Alright, next up is the William Clunt. Platt of Clunt's second edition located in the southwest quarter of the southwest quarter. And in government lot eight of section ten in the north twenty acres of the northwest quarter of section fifteen. T ninety-six north, range fifty-seven west of fifth PM, Yankton County, South Dakota. And Clunt's third edition in the southwest quarter of the southwest quarter, government lots eight, nine, ten. Section ten, T ninety-six north, range fifty-seven west of the fifth PM, Yankton County, South Dakota.
This one, they're just doing some cleanup, taking care of the road issue. Just making it a little easier.
I'll make a motion to approve the William Clute flat.
Second.
Alright, I have a motion, a second, go ahead and we can vote when you're ready.
Barkle.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Kettering.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Hoffman.
Yes.
Alright, next we have Bob Law Platt of lot. Four of block four and lot six and seven of block six. Law overlooked subdivision in the southeast quarter of section seven and in the northeast quarter of section eighteen. All in T ninety-three north, range fifty-six west of the fifth PM, Yankton County, South Dakota.
This is in this area right here. On four thirty-fifth, straight up from Conwood.
They just had to redesign a few of the lots. To make things work for roads and things like that, so they just redrew a few of the lines.
Second.
Alright. Motion by Michael and second by Kevin. Are you voting when you are?
Barkle.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Kettering.
Yes.
Michael.
Yeah.
Schultz.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Hoffman.
Yes.
Alright. I don't see anybody here for public comment. Um, one thing before we adjourn. Is this something like with this P U D deal that you guys could draw up? Some kind of resolution to. Like if we're gonna do this in the future so that. Um, we're gonna apply the closest zoning district or something in this kind of case or?
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's my plan is Don and I are actually looking to, to prioritize. What we want to tackle this year in planning and zoning and one of them's gonna be some clerical things, some of these. Questions that just keep popping up that we need to reword and, and so. As I, as I mentioned earlier, my plan is to add that to our list and. Actually have some kind of statement that says if the records aren't here. Are we gonna go to, yeah, the next nearest district and use those regulations? Or so, or what are we gonna do about it? And, and so that is the plan.
Gary, I guess uh. We could ask these guys if they have any areas that they want addressed for, that, those ideas to you too.
Yeah, definitely. So yeah, we're, you know, we're talking. What we're gonna do in various uh parts of the ordinance and uh, but yeah, if you have some. Some specific ver- portions of the ordinance that. You would like reworked it or you have concerns about, definitely let me know so that we can uh put them on our list.
I'd like to throw something out just for everybody's kind of. Something to think about. You know, um, with this real transitional district that we have. You know, and we've come down to the fact that it's really restricted, is there? And I, you know, you have to be kind of careful, but. Is there a possibility to somehow add some conditional uses into that district? Um, because um. For one thing, a lot of these areas. Are prob- even though they're labeled as real transitional now. There might be far enough away from any other type of development going on and they might. Want to do something and you know, and it really kind of. Snowballs into a. Train wreck, if, if what I'm saying, but you know, the one like, the one down at the, the lake that they passed or whatever here lately. Um, you know, I think if, if we could have had a conditional use on that for. Some other thing, we might not have.
Right.
So adamant to taking it to, back to an agriculture district, because in all honesty. Back at the beginning of this thing. Real transitional, the intent was not going to agriculture with it, it was because it was agriculture now and it was gonna go to something else because of growth or whatever.
Sure.
And you know, there are some areas, you know, north of town, they know that have popped up that everybody of course made the rush to the bank because it's. We want to get, you know, the real transitional thing or get zone to something else. But there's some of them areas that are probably never gonna change, I mean.
No, I agree, and that's part of the problem starting that way and, and so it, it makes it difficult. Now to, to try and make those, some of that stuff work and. And so that was kind of the intent of trying to get at least some of them changed where maybe it made sense. To do that, we did have the one that was in question and but uh. Hopefully down the line, those things will individually work themselves out, but. But it does make it difficult, just like the dual zones have made it difficult. I have another issue with a dual zone request. And those just, those kind of things just make it really hard to, to come up with a good solution on.
I thought maybe, you know, if a guy could somehow add a. You know, and you'd have.
Sure.
A little careful with.
Yeah.
You allowed, but what, this is some things that maybe are allowed.
Or special permitted uses or something, yeah, I agree.
Oh, but.
We'll certainly look at that.
Um, it would. It might stave off a big hubble until the, the development moves to that area where it's gonna change.
Right. And that's why we have these processes, so we can discuss that.
Cut off a couple hours of meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a really good idea.
Sounds good.
Alright, with that, I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Alright.